Okay.
Okay.
Just checking minutes shouldn't take very long.
No.
According to my loud clock, it's four o'clock. Um, and I'm gonna call the meeting of the planning commission, City of Manzanita, to order. Um, it's October fourteenth, four o'clock. And, um, welcome, everybody. Um, first item on our agenda is, um, audience participation. Are there any comments that the audience wants to make that are not related to items on the agenda today? No hands raised?
No hands raised.
Okay, um, well, just a reminder that, um, people can also comment by submitting emails, um, or mail, mail, or in person to city staff, or caller one of us, I guess. Um, next item is the approval of the minutes from the September ninth, 2024 meeting. Um, I want to ask the, um, commission if there are any additions, corrections. I hope all the spelling errors that have plagued us in the past have, um, been cleared. I, I do have one question, just on the roll call. Um, John, were you missing from the last meeting? You were not missing. You were here. Okay, I thought so. Um, could, could you unmute yourself, John?
Sorry, yeah, I thought I read through them and I was on the list, but I was there at the meeting.
Okay. Oh, you are here on the list. Okay. Never mind. All right. Thank you for clarifying.
Fell correctly, too. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, any other questions or comments, additions, corrections to the minutes? If not, I'll hear a motion to approve as submitted.
Phil move.
Thank you. Phil, is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, John. Uh, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as submitted. All in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, looks like it's unanimous. Approved. Thank you. Okay, um, now to the meat, the meat and potatoes of the mission. Um, we're here to talk about, uh, the ongoing comprehensive plan, um, revision, starting first with the housing, um, section of the comp plan and a simultaneous, uh, housing ordinance update. And, uh, Leila, do you want to start us off, or Scott? Um, who, who wants to take the plunge today?
I can start if you want. I think, um,
Thank you, Scott.
Um, Marcy's really gonna lead the show today. Um, the idea was we're gonna focus mostly on just some of the continuation of the conversation we had in September. So I'll probably just pass it to Marcy and I'll be available for any questions. And then, uh, following that, we have another agenda item that's related to the comp plan update with our committee. So
Okay.
Go take it from here, Marcy.
Okay.
Marcy.
Um, I'm here just to give a brief update, uh, can, as a continuation of our last meeting. And I have some slides I'd like to use to speak to. Um, can I go ahead and share those?
Yeah, you should be able to, Marcy.
Okay. Great. Can everyone see the slide here?
Yes.
And is it big enough? Um, so I wanted to just, wait. We're cutting that off. There we go. I wanted to provide a recap from the last meeting of the housing types that we're going to be looking at. We had a long, um, presentation about each of these housing types. I'm, I'm not going to go through that again. But, um, I have put the have-to-do housing types here in this list, and the want-to-do housing types that I heard about here. And, uh, because we've added skinny houses, narrow lot houses, um, and also courtyard apartments, we're really covering the full set of middle housing types that I'm aware of. And you'll remember that the orange ones are required by our House Bill 2001 or the Senate Bill 406. Also, the ADUs are required by Senate Bill 1051. Then you, last time you added, um, Third and Lanita, woody walk-ups and classic cottages, or cottages that go above and beyond the cottage cluster statutory requirements. And then we also added in these, uh, attached version of kind of courtyard or cottages, but attached in a courtyard setting. And we added in the narrow lot. We also added in the upper story at some point, can't remember when that happened, but like, uh, Third and Lanita, so we have a kind of a mixed-use housing type as well in our set.
Uh, Marcy?
Yeah, jump in.
I think maybe a clarification, narrow lot houses, uh, might be a little too confining, maybe it, the correct word would be, uh, small lot houses, so that we're not, uh, necessarily talking about, uh, uh, only, you know, kind of the skinny houses. I think the, uh, flexibility as you investigate, uh, lot sizes and stuff, uh, should, uh, perhaps be expanded.
Sure, um, let me go into a little bit detail so I can make sure I understand your point. The narrow lot house is like a row house, but it's on its own lot, separated, but it's a fee simple housing type. And often these came about because they were platted in historically in a lot of cities. And they're often a twenty-five, they're a 5,000 square foot lot, but divided into two. So they're 25 feet wide and, um, 50 feet long usually, or 100 feet long, sorry. Um, but I think you're saying, let's look at just small lots, period. Let's not be limited to these skinny, skinny lots.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that flexibility, uh, of, of being able to have, you know, lots of various configurations, uh, would be useful. And a twenty, 25-foot lot, uh, means at the moment in Manzanita, that's a 15-foot wide house. So as you investigate these things, I think, uh, you know, taking a look at, uh, side yard setbacks and front yard setbacks, all the setback stuff, so that, uh, uh, kind of the qualitative aspects of the housing that can be developed will be, you know, good. So, uh, anyway, small lot, I think, is probably a better term.
I, I, um, I think I understand what you would like to do, and we easily do that. It is going to, um, mean that we're looking at other, this, um, the smaller lot that might not be a subdivided 5,000 square foot lot might be found more easily on the larger lot areas of the city, where we could actually create, um, we're not just doing an infill project that's subdividing an existing lot, but we're, uh, doing smaller lots on a larger piece of land.
Okay, well, I don't want to get in the weeds too much, but, uh, you know, a very common, in many communities, would be a shared drive uh, way for two lots, uh, you know, with, uh, or a lot in the back and a lot in the front with a drive access, you know, so that the, uh, nature of the house has more flexibility based upon, you know, the characteristics of the lot size.
And it's important that these are fee simple lots to you.
Yeah, we, yes. Uh, but, uh, shared driveway access is a pretty common uh, solution to, uh, not having, you know, all driveways along the street. And just, uh, different configurations, so some flexibility, I think, would be useful.
Yep. Okay. Thank you for that additional detail. Any, uh, John?
I think you actually got to the parts of my question, uh, I think, uh, uh, Bert sort of dug down and I was gonna ask about flag lots and the shared driveway lot is a, I, I hadn't considered that, but that, you see them everywhere. Um, uh, so, yeah, I, I don't really have a que, I think you guys got to where I was gonna question.
Without getting into the weeds too much, we, this will, um, demand of us that we look closely at your subdivision regulations, and we do allow things like common tracts that can serve as shared driveways and, um, I can't remember what your flag lot rules are, but we'll look and be looking at that. Are those allowed and how are they regulated?
And, and visiting the setbacks, as Bert mentioned, is critical to all of those.
And when you say visiting the setbacks, are you really talking about maybe reducing some of these?
Uh, well, if you're gonna do townhouses or narrow lot houses or row houses, whatever you, it's almost a zero lot line situation, um, or maybe on one side a zero lot line. I, I don't know, I, I mean, it's worth looking at. We're
Yeah.
sort of throwing as much out here as we can at the moment.
Sure. What you just mentioned, the zero lot line configuration is a very interesting option. If we build that into your land division, if it doesn't already exist, it allows you to have a narrower house, but one of the walls sits on, actually on the property line has to be firewall. It has to be treated like a firewall.
Right.
Um, but it allows that house to have a larger side yard, a more usable side yard. Yeah, so, okay, these are really good and, um, informed, just feedback for me.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that, uh, John said the zero lot line. It could be that three fit, three-foot side setback, or, you know, could be even, uh, front yard setback as, uh, you look at parking. Uh, you know, we've got a lot of things that we need to consider to be creative about, uh, to make sure that the fabric of the community is maintained, but there's, uh, flexibility for a wide diversity of, uh, form and shape, uh, uh, based upon a creative lot kind of configuration.
I, I would like to just jump in really quickly on that. Um, right now, we have a stepped, um, side yard lot line. Um, it's five feet unless the building height, um, is, exceeds 10 feet, I think. Um, and the roof pitch exceeds a certain, um, I don't know, scale. Um, you know, and if it's above those two, uh, numbers, then it's an, it has to be an eight-foot setback. And the idea was to make sure that there was light and air in between each of um, the homes, uh, and that helps kind of preserve, um, livability in a lot of ways. So I, I want to make sure that, you know, um, as we talk about these zero lot line and narrow lot houses and things like that, that we really consider, um, if, you know, how, how we want everything to look in 20 years and, um, just to make sure that we're cognizant of light and air, um, animal passage, those kind of things. So that's, that's all my, my point. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Karen. Uh, if, uh, Bert or Karen or John, you have examples? Bert, it sounds like you might have some examples that you're even thinking of. Um, please, if you can, send photos or send addresses of those to me so we can look at them, because the more, I think it's always a lot easier to talk about these things when we can look at an actual example on, that's built and together kind of examine its characteristics. And with Google Earth, we can actually do that without having to go there. So. Um, all right, so any other comments about the list? This is by no means final, you know, we can continue to add small details as we go, but this, for me, this is my order. I wanted to let you know that this book is now out and available, and here's a link to it. Uh, we talked about the, the orange and the blue version of this book, but this is the second version. And we also did a poster for DLCD, and I just want to spend a moment talking about this because it affects some of the discussion about where these housing types go. If you were to get this poster off of the website, it come, it's a much larger PDF and you can kind of look, blow it up on your screen, or maybe you can even get a hard copy of it, but I, I want to point out that every single housing type that's in the guidebook is displayed on this page, and they're organized by, um, first of all, by their, um, name, townhouse, narrow lot cottages, et cetera, over to upper story. And then they're organized, um, across the middle here, on the north, I'm sorry, on the upper end, they're all, um, smaller infill type, um, manifestations of the housing type. On the lower half of the page, they're all larger lot or greenfield, uh, manifestations of the housing type. And then they also are sorted by density here. So the most dense small lot, the most dense, so this is the density column here, the most dense small lot versions go from dense to less dense. And the most dense large lot versions go from dense to less dense. So there's a density kind of clustering in the middle. And it's just an interesting way, I think, to think about in middle housing, it, it, I hope it proves that middle housing is definitely not only an infill product, it's not only a greenfield type of housing type, there's really a middle housing type for every single context in that we would find anywhere. So think about that when we're looking at the next discussion. So we're going to be asking the public, um, to, and now is a chance for you to kind of weigh into, um, just the beginning of the discussion about where do these housing types go? We talked about, at the last meeting, there were people who said that the woody walk-ups really didn't need to be included amongst the housing types in Manzanita. Um, not that they should go everywhere, but that they should go somewhere. Go, so the next kind of stage of discussion is about where do these housing types go? Where do people think is appropriate? And I thought I saw a hand up from Tom. Did you, Tom, did you have something you wanted to say?
Um, I wanted to ask, it's, I'm a little behind the curve here, but, uh, courtyard apartments, can, can those be owned in fee simple to units?
It is difficult. Um, we because you would have to have a common tract and then each individual lot, and they would be kind of like little row houses with a common tract. It's not out of the question. It's a land division issue. We would have to build that into your land division. Okay.
Marcy, they are, I've seen them, you can turn them into condos, correct?
That's true. That is all, that is also, that's really true for every one of these housing types, Tom.
I
They could be condominiumized.
I, I proposed courtyard apartments last time because I thought that they are, uh, particularly suited for retirement community, for people who are widows or widowers. You know, you can live in close association, there's people nearby to help you, keep an eye on things. Um, so I like the concept, but I also like the concept of the possibility of fee ownership. Uh, i- if only because it, um, well, it has financial consequences for people as well. So if, if, if we're considering that, and, and we also have to then consider whatever you said, division.
Land division.
Yeah. Um, I'd like to put that on the list.
And it, just to be clear, is fee simple ownership? Um, we did, we did say that these could certainly be condominiumized, but are you interested in pursuing actual lot ownership? Uh, but that would be slightly.
I'm not, um, I'm not smart enough to know what I'm thinking. Uh, this is one way to put it. I, I like the idea that people don't have to rent because, um, owning can provide opportunities for capital appreciation. Uh, and it, it doesn't even have to be people who are retirees. So that, that's what I'm interested in doing, however that works out.
You're interested in ownership of these types of?
Yeah, and I guess I should say, I, I would like that opportunity across all housing options, um, because it, it has been true in this country, and it may still be true, I'm not sure, that, that ownership is a way to build wealth and financial security over time.
Yes.
So, um, that's my thought.
All right. Thank you, Tom. John?
I had a question, and I don't, um, maybe you or Bert, um, would know what this is called, but, um, small, shared services communities, um, that have maybe a common kitchen and laundry. Um, I, I have seen those, but I'm not sure what they're called, but you guys are more housing oriented than I am. Um,
It's co-
That's fair.
That's fairly
Housing, yeah, that sounds right. And I don't know where you, it, it seems like maybe you can work that into more than one of these little um, uh, definitions that we're heading toward, but Tom sort of tickled my brain a little bit, uh, and, um, about sharing, uh, as you get a little older.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, as Pogo says, seeing that enemy in it is I.
Um, there, that, we will definitely not, we'll, we'll look closely to make sure that we're not prohibiting that kind of shared, um, shared community facility, whether it's a tool shed or a, um, a kitchen, like you said, a common kitchen, or even some co-housing, or, or co-owned, that's, you know, equity ownership is another way of owning things. Um, doesn't necessarily have to be co-housing, um, but they're also in a communities that decide that they'd like to have an extra unit for, um, relatives to stay in, like, and they share in the, um, so that it's not really the job of our code rewrite to, um, write that in, because that's really more of a real estate, uh, issue, but we definitely won't prevent it from being possible.
We just need to make sure we don't write it out. I, I agree, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think that's important sometime, and I, I forget about our code, if it, the definition of a dwelling unit includes kitchen and you know, et cetera, et cetera. So if the definition of a dwelling, dwelling unit precludes it, then we would want to make sure that we provide the opportunity for co-housing to work either as, uh, cottage housing with a common central kitchen, community space, or even, uh, you know, uh, a multi-bedroom kind of small house or apartment building of some sort.
It's not really SOR, but it's kind of along those lines.
Yes, right, yeah. That, like a studio.
SOR, uh, yeah. Single-room occupancy type.
Right.
I, I like that idea a lot. That was, typically that was originally built for student housing, as you mentioned.
Mm-hmm.
But, um, I, I've done some work recently in Ashland and, um, they put in, they actually got extra units, because it, even though it's four bedroom and they share a kitchen, it's considered one unit. So you can have a lot more quote-unquote density because it's considered a single unit. So we'll have to take a look at that.
Yeah, I think those should be all explored and, you know, community input and stuff, and, but, uh, anything that can help bring down the price of housing, I think, is a good thing.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Um, Scott, you might make a note to pass that along to, uh, you know, when we do our, uh, October 28th thing.
Yeah.
Throw that out there.
Mention that as a fill-in type.
Uh, uh, exactly.
Cool.
Um, hey, me again, I'm, I'm still behind the curve here a little. One, one other thought, fee simple, like, it's not simply financial, now that I think about it some more. If, if you own something, no matter how small or slight, it, uh, it builds engagement and a sense of responsibility, and you, you feel that you belong to and want to participate in the community a little more. So that's one other virtue of ownership of any housing type.
Right. You also tend to get notices of community action, whereas if you're a renter, you often kind of out of that. If, it helps to have a mailing address, surprisingly, simple thing to build community involvement. Um, I really love the way everyone's thinking about this, the planning commission especially, that this, this kind of, um, creative expansive thinking about housing coming from the planning commissions are gonna be really good for our project. So, um, before I talk about this slide, I did want to mention that there, there's one type of legis, there's one legislation that I didn't talk about before called Senate Bill 458, which was an, um, provisions to allow cities to create an expedited middle housing land division. It's a subdivision, it's a series of simplified, um, subdivision rules, and the city can adopt an approach that would use these. Cities were required to do it as part of House Bill 2001, but in my understanding, I haven't seen it universally accepted, but it sounds like we should be looking at that in Manzanita. Scott, do you have any thought on that?
No, I would agree. I think that's a smart idea.
So, okay, let's talk about this slide, which is just venturing into the place, the discussion about where these housing types go. And I want to explain that when we go to the workshop later this month, I believe we're still planning to have a map like this, where people are going to be able to put icons of the map of the housing types that are above and beyond that are extra. There, there is, um, a mandate that each lot that allows residential today needs to allow duplexes, accessory dwelling units and townhouses. That's a mandate. Um, so you almost are already there by having duplexes allowed everywhere. Then, in addition, as a, um, city that's being treated like a large city through this Senate Bill 406, you will also need to find places for triplexes, quadplexes and cottage clusters, and a lot of cities that comply with the House Bill did that by allowing those housing types on lots of 7,000 square feet or greater. And some cities did that simply by saying this zone of which the minimum lot size is 7,000 square foot will now become our quadplex cottage cluster zone. That, that was an approach that many cities took. Um, you could decide to do this a little differently. This is where a lot of choice comes into each city's options. Um, you could say that, uh, you, you're going to allow lots that are already of that size to be eligible for these housing types, and that's not so much a by-the-zone um, housing type. Or you could decide, uh, it's a combination of higher-density intensity housing in, in areas that are zoned commercial and mid-density. Um, plus, uh, a larger lot option. So I'm kind of curious where, where people are thinking some of these housing types might be appropriate, and does lot size enter into your thinking about location? Frank, go ahead, please.
Yeah, Marcy, when you're talking about that, can, can you use a percentage base of, of these particular areas, if they were zoned, whatever the size of the zones happen to be? Can it be based on, like, townhouses cannot exceed 25% of any new construction or, uh, yada, yada?
I think it's difficult to do that. I'm not sure you can. I might need your help, Scott, to do that, but in all the House Bill 2001 adoptions, we've never done it that way. It's been easier to do it. Just let the market make it possible and then let the market respond.
I, I, I don't think the rules allow you to, to restrict the, the amount.
I also, I think, Frank, to your point, if this helps at all, or you make me think about the fact that if we allow multiple housing types and some, it's the market, the home builder, the property owner, the existing homeowner have a choice, they could choose from a range of different housing types. They're not limited to just one.
Got you.
Bert, go ahead.
Uh, well, I guess the first question is, uh, you know, the zoning maps were probably created, you know, Uh, well, I guess the first question is, uh, you know, the zoning maps were probably created, you know. Ancient times, I'm not sure what. But uh, is the premise that the configuration of zoning maps is not going to change? Uh, or would that be something that the committee might consider?
In in Milwaukee, where Leila and I worked together. We consolidated a number of zones into one and it was. Because it became clear that the lots, that the zone that might have been. At least on paper, more suitable for the larger housing types. Because the minimum lot size was 7,000 square feet was actually not uniformly 7,000 square feet. You know, there were lots of many sizes. In there. And then there was another zone that was mostly lots of 7,000 square feet, but that was not the minimum lot size. So what we we actually combined some lots and. I guess in one scenario in Manzanita, you might. Not have zoning differences at all. It might just be based on lot size. You might have one middle housing zone. Does can you picture that?
Uh, maybe. I just wanted to bring that up to make sure that we didn't confine. Uh, the creativity based.
It would be more of a form-based approach like you were talking about earlier, you know, it'd be if the land is flat and if. The. Lots are generally the size. Uh, you can fit this amount of massing on and if it's shaped in this way and set back in this way. There's really not that much else we want to say about what housing type you're meeting. It's just you're meeting, you're providing some. Some housing and it takes on a certain shape and size and relationship to the lot and in relationship to the street and to its neighbors. Um, but it's we're not going to dictate that it's a row house or it has to be a. You know, it's more like just a number of units shaped like this.
Yeah, I I think that would be personally at least more successful for our community. Because I think that the biggest concern is going to be about the texture and the scale and kind of the rhythm and, you know, kind of the poetry of. How this is done and uh, and, you know, just because we were have legacy 5,000 square foot lots, I don't think is. And a legacy zoning code that was probably. I don't know. It maybe Karen knows, but 30 years ago or something, the lines were drawn probably maybe 50 years ago. So I just, it's a really good time to be creative and make sure that the outcome, you know, is building on the. Kind of beautiful characteristics of Manzanita right now. And, you know, our code actually allows some giant houses that, you know, really probably aren't appropriate. And this might be an opportunity to create more texture and some smaller units and just a more interesting kind of place. So anyway, I just think. This is probably the only time we're gonna get the opportunity to make sure that we're not. Anchored by some legacy situations.
Right. You could decide that the zoning. Designations, at least the residential zoning designations don't. Mean that much when it comes to middle housing. And that people are allowed to build on the lot depending on the lot size. Um, the floor area ratio that's permitted, we talked about using floor area ratio. In the residential zone, which you don't currently do, as I understand it. And uh, that would be a way of both. Limiting the dwelling sizes. So you don't get these, you know. You you did mention at the last meeting that there are some single dwellings that are probably as large as a Woody Walker. I mean, maybe I'm exaggerating a little bit, but. But um, you could guess you could get.
More size of a hotel.
Right. So this would this the approach of using floor area ratio would just say that a dwelling, you know, gets this much. And if you want more dwellings, if you want more F A R, you can get more dwellings for that. So you can provide more dwellings. This this would be like a totally different way of. Um, managing the shape and size of buildings.
You know, I I'll just one more comment is, I think the the mixed use and commercial, obviously, those kind of uses, we we have a. A backbone, uh, you know, in the center of our town of where those occur. And uh. You know, it seems like, uh, you know, that you just build upon that, right? And I don't know, um, as we consider the growth of the community and the. The nature of the edges of our community. Uh, if special care and attention needs to be done there, especially on the 101. And what's the nature of of what that will be like in 20 or 30 years? So once again, this is an opportunity to think about that. And then in the the larger. Non-city but urban growth boundary areas, there might be some opportunity for some. Uh, different, uh, higher density. Conditions there and potentially. Uh, maybe some mixed use.
Yes.
I think, yeah. I'd like to build a little bit on um, what Bert was discussing and take a little step. Further back as we're talking about these issues. Um, and that is, I would love to hear from our citizens and residents. A a little bit bigger. Or vision or or confirm. The vision that we say we have right now. Um, and that is that Manzanita. Is intended to be have a village-like atmosphere. Um, you know, with walkable streets and those kind of things and to make sure that as we're plotting these. Technical things. That we don't lose. The sight of of the bigger picture of. You know, do we want to be? Strictly a residential community with a with a few shops. And do we want those shops to support the local people or? And I guess. I I just want to, I I would love for us to come to a definition of what we think Manzanita is now and should be in 20 years. As we're talking about where we put these things, because where we put these things definitely shapes what kind of. Um, community we have. And I want to make sure that we're working those two ideas hand in hand. Um, and not just be technical about this, but also be. Um, kind of, I I'm losing my words today, but um, kind of a whole. A a whole. City um, look. Does that make any sense at all?
It it makes absolute sense. And I actually. To put you on the spot a little bit, Scott, maybe we can talk about the larger.
Yes.
Project and how this fits into it.
No, that's a really good point, Karen. And I think that um, one of the biggest elements of a comprehensive plan is the vision. And the vision is typically the intro to the plan. Said, why are we doing this plan? We're doing it to reach our vision as a community. So um, you as you as you mentioned, you've been doing visioning, you know, Leila started this almost two years ago now. So we've got a lot of information about what that vision is. We don't fully have a a drafted. Version of that, but that is something that's going to be coming up, is being worked on now. And it will, you will likely get to see and review as part of. Uh, is along with our committee and with the public. So um. We will be developing that vision and I think it's very smart. To kind of. Make sure that the decisions we're making at the technical level, as you mentioned, match that vision. So hopefully that helps a little.
Does that, does that help, Karen? I think there's um, just a little bit of. Discussion that we'll need to have internally about the the staging of things because the housing code amendments do come first.
Yeah.
The visioning is going on constantly, you know, to the end. And so, yeah, we'll have to make sure that we. Have. Circling um, an iteration as we go.
Yeah, definitely. And we have like, and and we will share that with everyone, but I think. As you, as I mentioned, there has been quite a work been done, a lot of work been done on trying to develop that vision already, and I don't want to lose that. I think you're right. What we do need to do is just confirm it. And then we're relay back to it as we work through these phases of the comprehensive plan. And housing work.
Yeah, that does. And I I know that there's special urgency with um, getting the housing um, portion done because we are behind the ball. Legally with our code. Um, but yeah, I I appreciate that and I'm hoping that our. People will be will be bringing those. Concepts to bear as. On our October 28 meeting and and the future ones that we have that that we're all looking at the same kind of picture together. And I appreciate, I know that you guys are doing a lot of work behind the scenes, but I want to make sure that everybody is aware that that work is going on and that they're not being. Left behind or forgotten in this process.
For sure. And our workshop that we're going to have. Is focused on housing, but I guarantee you there's going to be larger discussions at each of those these tables. About visioning and about what the community wants as a whole. And even specific things, you know, very specific things will happen during those conversations. So as as Marcy. But there will be visioning going on through throughout, even though we will have a draft vision that can. That will work through till we get till we finally have the comp plan update that will actually include your community vision in a written statement.
Great. Thank you.
All right, um, John.
I just had two points. Uh, maybe questions, but um. We had talked about form-based zoning and and I'd just like to point out that I I know Bert's been hit with this this whole career, but. Um, lot lines are very much. An unreal thing. I mean, they're real from a legal standpoint. Tom. Don't, you know, but but from a physical standpoint, they don't exist. And maybe we we could consider, uh, and we're very much a built-out town. Um, I don't know exactly what the numbers are, but. You know, in the in the main core of the community, we're probably close to 90% uh, built out, maybe 85, 90%. So using um. The existing housing. Um, and keeping the fabric and the scale of what we currently have, maybe a way to um. I I don't know how to do this, Marcy. Uh, I don't know how you tailor a zone to what's there, but. I mean, in any event. Uh, i- if our goal as. As um, Karen says, is to keep our village concept and keep the scale that we currently have. Using what we have as a basis for our uh, future physical build-out. To keep it the same and and work it within the. All the. The mandated um, issues from the state. Is um, is a way to kind of keep what we've got. The other thing I wanted and Bert or. I believe brought it up and um, or maybe it was Karen, um. The. Work loft or work live uh, units like on Third and Lenita. Um, if we want to encourage that. Uh, it it would seem like our commercial district is the only place that's even possible at the moment. But our commercial zone is very much linear, starting at 101 and ending at the ocean. And I'm just going to throw out, do we want to turn the corner on that at any of the little intersections? As we march down 101 to the ocean. Like, I'll throw Fourth Street and Third Street um, as examples of. Maybe we can extend the work loft north and south. Uh, for a half a block or a block. Just to kind of bleed out into the community and. And uh. Diversify our. Commercial area a little bit, give it give it a little more uh, interesting texture. And those were really the only two points I wanted to make. Uh, one thing I would say, Marcy or Scott. It's not just housing on the 28th. We do have history and and open space. That's part of that. And as you pointed out, I know the discussion is going to go well beyond all those things, so. Trying to remind everybody. Thank you.
You, John, I was gonna say that. We're this discussion about where. Corner commercial might go. I heard clearly that people are interested in. A housing type like Third and Lenita. That's definitely above and beyond what House Bill 2001. Requires cities to do, but you're you're interested, so we're going to include that in. There is an icon. I was just trying to confirm that for that housing type at the workshop. Which we're hoping that will get people will give us a little information about where they might, it would be acceptable to have. Or where they think it would be really great to have a corner store, say. Um, just by having that housing type as a icon that can be placed on the map. So. We'll continue that thread through this project. Tom?
Uh, thank you. If I'm following. The discussion, we're we're talking about what types of housing we want where. And I'm the view that we should allow all highs and housing types everywhere. The only constraint should be whether. The um. The lot would accommodate it and some restrictions we can build in about the size of the structure on that particular lot. Um, but I I'm. Very skeptical about restricting certain housing types. To certain. Neighborhoods in. It because it's the housing. That determines. Who lives there. Who wants to, who can afford to. And in the past, most communities have restricted certain types of housing to certain locations and you end up with. Demographics that are segregated as well. Uh, I live in a. A neighborhood, I may have mentioned this before, in Portland, which is entirely. Single-family homes as a consequence, it's entirely, it's an enclave of single-family homes, so it's an enclave of expensive dwellings, so it's an enclave. Of wealthy white families. I want to see a community where we are welcoming to all sorts of people and that they can live. Everywhere and that we are all integrated and I don't want to see. Particular types of housing. Shunted off to. The side, so to speak, put it outside. The core area. I'd rather have. All of us living. Together. I think that makes for a better community and and for sure. Whatever it is, uh, townhouses. Duplexes, cluster cluster cottages, whatever, there needs to be some restrictions on on the size on the lot. Just like I would like to see some restrictions on, you know, a single-family dwelling on a lot. Uh, in order to accommodate light and air and wildlife and vegetation. And and the village feel, if you will, but I don't want to see. Us saying this type of housing. And the people who. Can afford it. Go here. And and not there.
Okay. I. I think that is where we're headed, given everything I'm hearing about a more form-based code, one that's based on. Lot size and what fits on the lot and not so much what's inside the shape. Um, but that the shape does have some definition through. Setbacks and height and floor area ratio or maximum development capacity. Which the maximum development capacity kind of is dictated by the size of the lot, but in a vision like you're. Describing, Tom, there would be. A shape like a house, maybe it's sort of similar to what's there today in the surrounding. Fabric. But inside, perhaps there's single-room occupancy. Um, maybe there's a co-housing or maybe it's a. Triplex, you know, uh, maybe it's a. Courtyard apartment on a fee simple. A common tract and fee simple lots. I mean, I. Hearing that we want to make. Uh, be sort of agnostic about what the housing arrangement is.
Yeah, and I have seen some conversions of large, single family homes into duplexes or triplexes or they condominiumize it. And so you would even looking at the outside structure, you would not necessarily know that it is multiple dwelling units and and you know, I want to I have seen in my own neighborhood stiff opposition to any sort of middle housing from attitudes like, well, if we put a duplex in there, then, you know, one of them is going to be a renter. Like, we don't want to accommodate renters in our community. That's my concern. And I don't think it needs to be. The concerns that people have about what's going to be there do not need to be driven by what it is as opposed to what it looks like when you build the thing out.
Right. No, thank you for articulating that. I guess one more question, I I'd like to point out one thing here, which is that in this poster where we laid all these housing types kind of along a spectrum of density and site size. I just want to point, if I can magnify this a bit, point out this one housing type that's this one, this courtyard apartments. Tom, you'll like this one. You might even know this one. It's on, it's in northwest Portland. And this is a little courtyard apartment structure. Each and each unit has its own entry. I think there's six units on here. But this is a 5,000 square foot lot. I mean, just to say, just to point out that you could have multifamily housing on a 5,000 square foot lot and it fits in very well with the housing in this area, which is predominantly mid, mid density. So yeah, I just want to point out that I think we're going to head there in this project where we're looking at many different housing arrangements, but focusing more on the shape and size of the structure. So one last question before we move off of this where question, if I could ask, I'm hearing, I heard someone say, forgive me, I forgot who, that we should build base, I think it was you, John, maybe base the shape and size of the structure that we create, like that we zone into our code, based that on the shape and size of structures that are already there. Or the general fabric or the general amount of like yard space to to house size. But I also want to press a little bit on that question because I think we may want to look at some areas where we want to go a little further, like, and where would that be? Where it's not just maintaining the same.
I wasn't advocating maintaining, Marcy. I actually would like to see some in and out in the fabric of so but but based on, you know, again, based on what's there, but not uniformly.
Okay. Okay.
So I think I'm agreeing with you.
Okay, what a way that we've worked in places before with a form based codes, kind of understanding going in. In this area, people want things to stay the same. In this other area, people are willing to see kind of like a 1.5 amount of change. In this other area, people are willing to see complete transformation, but we kind of understand where those boundaries are. Yeah, so I'm going to just, I think I'm at the end of the slide here. I want to mention a few points, but I see, Tom, you still have your hand up? Okay, your hands down. All right. So the last point I wanted to make is that in all of this, we are very aware of affordability. This has come up in the in the last planning commission and also the committee meeting the other day. And I just want to say that you know, what we're doing here, the code amendments are one very, very important piece of making affordability and housing choice happen. There are other things that your city is already doing, like the affordable housing tax abatement. There are other things that cities can do to reduce the cost of the systems development charges or other costs of development, make affordable housing to incentivize it. Of course, there are state grants that you can get, especially for certain kinds of housing, like the Woody walkup is probably more eligible for certain affordable housing grant money and infrastructure grant money. And then, of course, cities can provide land and all those things together, just, you know, get you closer and closer and closer to providing more affordable. The code amendments that we're doing are very important. They're obviously not the whole answer, but I just wanted to say that we're aware of the full set of things that cities can do and and as it was mentioned in the committee meeting the other day, a lot of fees above and beyond the regulatory framework, those things can be written into your comprehensive plan. So those are policies that you can actually commit to through the comprehensive plan process. Bert?
And just we want to make sure that the, and there's another dot that says parking. So we really got attacked by that.
In what way do we need to tackle parking? Can you just be more specific?
Well, you know, affordability and parking impacts affordability so significantly in terms of ultimately the restrictions requiring two spaces, even one space, depending on the situation, can preclude a lot of people from being able to own a house. So I just think we need to be really smart about making sure that we really think through the parking situation, both in terms of what's required and then where is it provided? As well as the size of the stall, you know, all those things really can impact the nature of the cost of housing. So, you know, this is an opportunity to take a look at that and get committee input and recognize that you know, that can be in many cases currently in our city, if you if you have a if you were to buy a studio apartment, you'd actually have two spaces that would be bigger than your studio apartment. That doesn't make any sense.
That's a good point. I'm glad you you made that. We'll have to include a graphic somewhere in our work that shows that how a studio apartment and parking spaces, even a single parking space is sometimes as big as some studio apartments. But we somehow make it easier to build a housing for cars than it is for people. As some people say. Parking is definitely included in this first bullet point, though. I want to, that's part of our regulatory framework. We are going to be dealing with parking. Frank? You're muted?
There we go. Sorry about that. Just to go back to what Tom said, in the slide earlier, when he was, Tom was concerned about housing being available everywhere. Doesn't SB 2001 cover that? It says that duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, cottage clusters and townhomes on each lot zone for residential use must be allowed. So doesn't that basically cover that?
It does require, yeah, most cities respond to the House Bill 2001 by saying on this lot, you could do a triplex or a quadplex or if it's a 7,000 square foot lot. So you're not limited to one type, but I'm also hearing that people might want to say, well, inside of this, you might have a you might have a different living arrangement, like you might have a common kitchen and very small, single room occupancy rooms. I mean, I I think I'm hearing that people want to go a little bit above and beyond what the House Bill 2001.
Okay, thank you.
I see no more hands, so I'm going to call an end to my presentation and hand it over to the rest of the agenda to you, Scott.
Probably Karen, but thanks for
To you, Karen.
The conversation, Marcy, that was great. Good input.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay. Obviously, we didn't make any decisions here today about where anything goes or what anything is going to look like. We really need to hear from our folk on October 28. I'm sorry about my clock. I'm really not sorry about my clock. I love my clock. So I I want to make sure that everybody gets the word out to our entire community that this is really important and we don't want to make any decisions beyond where people want to go, where our where our town wants to go. But so that input is is critical on this. And with that, let's see, it's five o'clock. It's five o'clock. Let's move on to the next agenda item. Oh, one more thing. If people are not able to attend on October 28, what is the alternate route that they should take, Scott?
Sure, we will have an online survey for those folks that cannot attend that meeting. And we're going to have many other meetings, obviously, public meetings throughout this process. So this is the first of, I think, four large community events.
Okay, but specifically this one is going to be talking about
Housing and historic preservation. And shoot, what was the last one, John? You said it. By open space.
Open space, yeah, those are all all three are important issues to hear from people on. Okay, so do the survey and or attend October 28. So let's move on to our Public Advisory Steering Committee introduction, because this is a big part of what we're what we're doing. Is that Leila? Or Scott, who's talking about?
I can lead it. So go ahead, Linda, I'll hand it to you.
Well, thank you. Let me see if I can screen share. And there we go. Okay. Are we seeing our presentation there?
Not yet.
No? Oh.
Sometimes you have to select the screen and
I am. Try it again. Now are you seeing it?
It looks just just black to me.
It said double click to enter full screen mode, Linda.
Oops. Oh, I'm seeing it. Let me let me try it one more time. No. Are you? Goodness, okay. Still not working, eh?
Since you started it, it's just not showing anything that you're trying to show us.
Shoot.
Do you want me to try and share the one I have, Linda?
Sure. That would be great. Let me try one more thing. Do you have it? I'll try one more time and then. Yeah, it's black. What's going on? Oh, technology. Darn you. Okay, I will hope Leila can pull up the slideshow, but I can talk about it without you seeing the images. I'm Linda Kessner. I am on the Public Advisory Steering Committee for the Comprehensive Plan and I just wanted a few minutes of your time today to introduce you to the committee and to talk about our role in this process. And I see something happening. Yay.
There it is.
Okay.
Okay, great. Can you go to the agenda, please? Next slide. And and I'm really heartened to hear all of your comments today about making sure that we're engaging the community, because that is entirely what we are here to do. So I want to talk a little bit today about the committee and what our roles are and introduce us to you. Talk about the community participation options that we have in place today. I was going to do a quick demo, hopefully, of our website and then see what other questions and feedback you might have for our team. Next slide, please. So the Public Advisory Steering Committee essentially has two primary roles. Next. We're to advise the project team. And next. And then we're to do community engagement. Can you just page down? Sorry. There we go. There's no more animation, so that's the only one. Next. All right. So as far as advising the project team, we just our job is to make sure that the goals and policies make sense together, that iterative process we've been talking about as we go through. There are 19 state goals, as you know, but 14 of those apply to Manzanita, and we'll be doing those through a phased approach over the course of the next year and a half to two years with a focus on the housing upfront. And so as we go through the process, once these housing ordinances are updated, we'll want to make sure that our language in our chapters are compatible with what's in our comprehensive plan. And then most importantly, our job is to make sure that we're seeing that community vision reflected in the language that's in the final plan. So next, please. So community engagement is our primary effort right now. We've really just kickstarted that process off. But our job is to gather community feedback and to make sure that the values and the vision that we're hearing about our collective future are represented in the comprehensive plan. We're going to act also as liaisons to specific groups. We'll be meeting with lots of stakeholders throughout the area, nonprofit boards, local business owners. And we're trying to find as many ways as possible to get the word out that this project is happening and to gather information from the community about what they want to see us preserve and what they want to see us improve in our 20 year plan. Next, please. Why don't we take, can we stop sharing for a sec so we can introduce everybody to the group and the public at large? And I'm Linda Kessner. We have Mark Adamson here today. Mark, do you want to say?
Hello. Yeah, hello, I'm Mark Adamson.
Great. Connie Burton? Sorry. And Connie, are you there? I see you. Rick Jackson?
Hello, everybody. I'm Rick.
Hey, Rick. Patrick Johnston?
Linda, I am here. This is
Here you go. Good. Patrick? Brian Sint?
Hello, everybody. I'm Brian.
John Ryman is another member of the community member on the Public Advisory Steering Committee, but he is not able to join us today. And we have ex officio members. We have Mayor Stock, Council President Kozlowski and Planning Commission Representative John Collier. And we just recently had our second meeting this week to talk about the meeting on the 28th that's coming out. And again, we are really encouraging the public to seek us out, so I wanted this opportunity to show our faces. If you see us walking around town, say hello. We would love to have time to talk to you. Can we pull that up? Again, Leila? Please. Please. We talk about the community participation aspect of this project. And so we're on slide seven now, please. Or eight. I apologize. This is essential. This work started a couple of years ago. That information is not going away. It's also going to be used, but we're trying to confirm that it's still valid. And I want to stress that when we're talking about community for this effort, we are talking about anybody who lives, works, or plays in Manzanita, anyone who finds Manzanita an important and special place where they spend their time. It's not just limited to residents, although we absolutely want to make sure we're, we are getting our residents involved as much as possible. So we have in place today. We are trying to meet with as many people as possible. We're doing face-to-face, one-on-one conversations with individuals. We would love to have you invite us to come to your book club, your coffee group, any other group that you have get together regularly. We would love the invitation to come and chat with you. I'm going to show you where that online survey is. And then if you think of other ways that we can get this word out there and get people to be involved and to share their thoughts and feelings, we would love to love to entertain those ideas. So please let us know anything else that comes up. Next. Ah, the website. Do you think I'm going to be able to share that? I was hoping to do a little demo. Let's see.
Can't, Linda. Just let me know. I'll jump in. And you can't.
You know, the big black screen of doom. What's going on?
No.
Okay.
Okay, I'll jump to it. Hold tight. Do you want me to, I'll start from the city's
Website, please.
Yeah, the city's website. Tight.
Just the homepage. I'll have to figure this out for Wednesday. Okay, so first of all, when we get there, there is a giant, beautiful poster about the Community Summit on ci.manzanita.org.us. And as has already been mentioned, we highly encourage all of you to sign up and get one of those tickets for this event. We have seating limited to 120 members, but we will be focusing on the middle housing options, open spaces, landmarks, and just getting a presentation from the project team of what's been going on to date and what they can expect to see over the next 18 to 24 months. Any luck, Leila? Oh, I'm
Is it, can you not see my screen?
Oh, I can see it. You're good.
Okay.
Sorry. Down on the left is just one of the places you can click to get to that community conversation survey. That'll be up for a while. It's a similar set of questions that we're asking when we meet with you in person. But if you'd just like the time to think about your answers and think about the things that you appreciate about Manzanita today, the things that concern you, what you imagine Manzanita would look like in 2045, these are the kinds of questions that we're gathering here. And then back on the homepage, there is that link to the Comprehensive Plan website. And this is a special project website that'll be in place throughout the duration of the project that has a lot more details and nitty-gritty information. So this homepage area will have announcements about upcoming events, has a lot of details about the goals and the plans that we're going to be reviewing. If you want to nerd out on it like the rest of us, then you can get a lot of good information here. An overview of our larger project schedule, and you'll see that that Community Summit number one is the first of four that are planned and is the one that's scheduled for the 28th. Sign up and show up. And also on this page is, again, the list of the committee members. So if you want to reach out to one of us, you can. And at the bottom, there's a way that you can subscribe to get updates about the project as it's going along. If we may go to the next page, the project resources, a couple of important things on this page. Especially down at the bottom, there's a detailed project schedule, so you can see when we're planning to do different activities. Recordings of previous meetings, some important documents are also available for your review on this page. But down at the bottom is a very important piece. This is where, this is the best place for the community to reach out to contact us. If you would like to schedule us to come and meet with you as individuals, schedule us to come and meet with your group. If you have a question, like I really don't get what you're saying about X, this is the place to come. Fill out your question, send in your message, and someone will get back to you as soon as we can. And then finally, on the Get Involved section, there's, this is where you would find announcements about other events that we're having for the public. And also, this is another place where we have a link to that same survey down at the bottom. Oh, or we did. Oh, I see you clicked on the event. Yes, thank you. And there's another link. It's the same survey. You just have two different ways to get to it. So you can get to it from the project website here in the Get Involved page or from the city's homepage. So I believe that was all I was going to demo today or make Leila show. So I got thrown off a little bit in my intro. I wanted to say that Leila said a number of times over the years, something that's really resonated with me in that make what you want to happen the easiest thing to do. And I feel like this is our opportunity to do that. So we want to find out what is, we want to make happen by talking with the community at large. And that's what we're really focusing on right now as a committee. And then we have the opportunity between the Planning Commission and the project team to take that information and turn it into our 20-year plan with ordinance that support the work, that support that vision. So any questions or comments or feedback, we would love to hear from you. And see you on the 28th.
I'd like to thank you all for volunteering for this project. It's never easy to spend your time as a volunteer when you really don't know what that time is going to look like, depending on, you know, how many questions you get and how anyway, thank you all for volunteering. It's really important work that you're doing. And that allows Planning Commission to be decision-makers on this. And we know that, that our community is being heard. So thank you very much for that volunteering. And I'll leave it to anyone else to have a comment if you like.
Great.
Okay, thank you so much, Linda. Appreciate that. And I'm sorry your screen didn't work. Well,
I'm sorry too. I'll have to work on that.
I know Zoom is its own little world.
Are you taking any public comment on this? I do see that Michael Gardner has his hand raised.
Sure, absolutely.
I just had a quick question. Are the committees' meetings open and available to the public? I don't see them on the calendar.
So we, Michael, we post those as they are scheduled, so they're approximately, Scott, you remind me, every about, every two months.
Yep.
And so as soon as they are scheduled, we post them on the city's calendar, and then there's a Zoom link, and folks are welcome to attend.
Yeah, I'll also add that they're all recorded, so if you want to go back and watch them, you can.
Thanks, thanks very much.
Thanks, Michael.
Any other questions? Comments? With that, I would just ask Leila if you have an update for us on what's coming down the road in our November meeting and are we, we typically don't meet in December, but if we have business to attend to, I think we're all happy to do that.
I think. Yeah, so we don't have any active land use applications. I'm anticipating really for the rest of the year. We are expecting the Manzanita Pines to come into Planning Commission either January or February. It just depends on when they get their application. We, we may be back just in November, perhaps to do an update, and I'll look to Scott, maybe on just sort of what came out of the Community Summit, if we have the ability to kind of pull that together. So have sort of an informational as possible in November, but I don't at this time anticipate that we will have a December meeting and our meeting in November, if we have one, will be short. And I think November, I believe, falls on a holiday, so we would be meeting that following Tuesday, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any further business to discuss? And is there a motion to adjourn?
Want to stay?
Move, we adjourn.
I'm going to go watch the football game. I'll move that we adjourn.
Thank you, thank you. All right, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for being here today.
See you on the 28th.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Bye.